I just want to make sure that you're all in. I hope you mean the city, which it means it's also your issue.
Where am I? Do you know where I am?
You're responsible.
No. I said that a long time ago, but it's hard.
Yeah. They'll be going back.
Well, there's no one looking.
Did you get it? Did you get it immediately?
Yeah, we got it.
The truck will be off the second now. Sometimes I can get it to go back.
You're wrong.
You can't get it back.
I have a broken power.
I blew it back.
You run up there and kill it.
You've never ran before.
Yeah. You can either sit here or walk up there.
I'm on my street.
That's what happened. They were supposed to see the people.
Very nice.
Sometimes they're calm and say, I'm going to give you a little. I can say something to you though. Um.
At least they're being honest.
Oh, good. So, well, couldn't use a year, so that's why we're kind of quick.
We're going to get started. Thank you everybody for coming tonight. We also have Mr. Millen, his own speakerphone, the diaplist, on the side of the podium. Mayor three speaker.
Please, Mayor, ask a prayer. Lord, thank you for bringing us all together to do this in your business. And we all honor you in our service tonight, as you got us doing these businesses in your business and matter, with you approved. Amen.
Everybody ready? Let's please.
Let's pray to the heavens, to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, and to the nation under God, in the visible, in the written, and the spiritual.
Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes for executive session on July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes of our executive session on July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and our regular city council meeting on August third, two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, I'll second the first motion.
I made the motion that we approve the regular city council meeting on August the third, twenty-eight, twenty-one.
We've got two motions to approve, the session of July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Nettles? Is it Dr. C? Mr. Millen?
Yes.
And I. Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of a regular city council meeting on August the third, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll motion that we approve the regular city council meeting on August third, twenty-eight, twenty-one. Second.
Mr. Nettles?
Yes.
Mr. Nettles?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to amend those August third minutes of our new business search first reading on the ordinance, resulting to Orange Street. As I read those minutes, it indicates that no action was taken, but my memory is that council took a vote because I had refused myself, because I had previously represented William Johnson and family, um, and had talked with Ms. Johnson and her daughters about the property that is tied to.
Yeah, that's correct. We voted.
So, we need to amend those August three minutes to reflect their cause of note.
All right. So, do we have a motion to amend, uh, the August third meeting for the regular city council meeting, showing that we voted for the Orange Street?
I'll motion to amend the regular city council meeting on August third, twenty-eight, twenty-one, um, councilman.
Read for the fifth. Thanks. Hi. Ready?
Uh.
Mr. Millen? All right, uh, before we do approval of the meeting tonight, I would like to ask for amendment, um, starting to be added for tonight, for, um, consideration for funds for the D D R A, for additional council, as we just talked about tonight, if we can amend that tonight under, um, new business. Put it out there. Discuss that.
I'd also like a, an amendment.
Okay.
And I would like to amend it that we remove the bullets from six, so that we can allow, allow the, um, at least some interchange between our citizens and the council members, as that is their only time dedicated to them at least having, you know, participation in our meeting.
Discuss that. And put that as F. Put that as F and discuss that.
Okay. And I just want to amend it so that that, you know, the, uh, we already have policies in place for disruptive behavior and the time and things of that call, but to put this as a bullet up on the air.
Well, the first one is correct, is they're, they're not supposed to address us. The second one, we have the right to address them, if we want to address them.
Exactly. But it says may not, and I don't like that part. I'm an elective official.
I have no problem taking that out. We'd like to be, we have the rights, council, to address them.
Appreciate it.
So, that's the B F. Double comment session.
We can just amend it, the word says, council members may engage speakers in discussion, so we may.
So, just strike out "not".
All right. At least a bullet.
Okay with that?
So, I'd like to approve the meeting agenda to include E, D D R A, funding music events, and then for number six, public comment, to strike the word "not", council members may not engage speakers in discussion.
Is it ready? Mr. Nettles? Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Hi. Is there any motion approved? Thank you. All right, now, report standing committees, the Darlington Downtown Revolutions Association, this is Rock.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time to come up here and report you. As the Executive Director of the D D R A, I am also Chair of the Beautification Board, and our annual cleanup date for the fall will be this Saturday from nine to twelve, meeting at the Chamber, and we will do mainly literal vote this time, uh, as well as a couple of other projects such as decorating for fall. So, we do encourage folks to come out. Calmetta Pride, who's giving us supplies, trash bags, vests, the grabbers, that sort of thing, so that we can continue to make our city a great place. Also, thank you so much for your support of our program to have the city concert series that we've been doing. We had our third event this past Saturday, and it was huge. There were a ton of people there, and it was a very big mix of young, old, everybody represented at that event, and everybody was having a good time, and I just want to say thank you again for that. Our next concert is October second. We're going to have an eighties block party with About Time Band, which is the Darlington Band, playing eighties music. It will be October second from seven to ten P M downtown. Sassy Girl and Tea, where the local businesses will be offering a prize for best eighties costume that evening. You can also check out classic cards, cornball tournament, and a variety of foods, and as always, we'll have great Pepsi and water, thanks to Pepsi of the West. Also, the D D R A continues our monthly member breakfasts, eight A M, Thursday, September thirtieth, at Cocke's diner. It's no card for members and a small five dollar fee for those who are non-members, and it really serves to connect our businesses, so that we can support each other. Also, mark your calendars, October is another busy month. Taste Darlington, Thursday, October fourteenth, at Darlington Raceway. Normally, we have this event in the spring, but for COVID concerns, at the track day, we're not allowed to have it in April. They are allowing us to have it in October, just as they had full capacity at the race this weekend. We'll be at full capacity for Taste Darlington. If you're a business civic group, if you're a church, or if you're an individual and you just want to share your love of cooking, it's something you really enjoy, please get in contact with my office and we'll get you signed up. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on our social media and through our news alert system each week. We reach, uh, around three thousand people, and we continually update our website, buildupdarlington.org. You can submit information to that website, and you can also sign up to receive these alerts directly to your phone as a text message or directly to an email.
Can you just play that tape one more time real clear, so everybody stands, because a lot of you say, well, I didn't know about this, I didn't know about that, and you get, I get texts all the time, so how, I forgot how to sign up.
Yeah, so.
So, how do they sign up for a text, because everybody has a cell?
So, if you, and most people have a cellphone, and this is kind of why we paid the extra money to have this website, you go to buildupdarlington.org, and at the top, you look for news alerts, sign up for news alerts, you click on that, you punch in your cellphone number, and it'll send them to you as they, uh, are sent out. We send them out each week, as well as sometimes we'll send additional ones during the week if something big is going on, or there are weather alerts and things like that will also be sent out that way. And you can get it sent as a text to your phone or as an email, whichever way you prefer. All right. And then you've got your flyers, another date to put on your calendar, Stare on the Square, that is a joint project between the D D R A and Darlington Recreation, which is basically trigger, a safe trick-or-treating environment for folks downtown on the square to go in and out of those businesses that are there, and if your business or, or church wants to participate and you're not located on the square, just give us a call, we'll get you a table, and you can have a table, a booth set up to distribute your promotional materials and candy to the children. The first year we did it, we had about eight hundred kids, uh, and it's grown to probably fifteen hundred the last time that we did it, in twenty nineteen. So, it's a really good time, and a lot of the community comes out. It's early enough in the day that, you know, the smaller children can come out and participate.
What is the date, Tom?
It is Thursday, October twenty-eighth, a Thursday before Halloween, four thirty to six thirty. Any questions?
Can I lay a question? The Beautification Board, is the Beautification Board still maintaining their entrances into the city?
Uh, previously, uh, the beautification line item that funded the cleanup of those entrances was a separate line item in the funding budget, prior to, you know, when I was with the city in twenty thirteen. From twenty thirteen till about twenty sixteen, it was still a separate line item, and it went to a specific company that was supposed to keep up the entrances. The Beautification Board and Councilor's not happy with the results, um, for what they were paying, they didn't feel like they got a good deal, um, and so they decided, instead of bidding it out again, um, to hire somebody to do those entrances, entries and rose gardens and different beautification projects, and so that was added into the budget at that time. Several people have gone through that position, um, it's a very challenging, and we discussed this in the budget work sessions, sort of a challenge to keep people in that position, because they're working by themselves, um, and to keep track of them, and to have enough equipment, when the street department has duplicate equipment, and obviously larger equipment, you know, as far as cutting grass and that sort of thing, they've got zero-turn motors, we don't need one zero-turn motor in the planning department when the street department has three. Um, and so to kind of remove that duplication, we, with this last budget, as our, as we lost another person in that department, um, my understanding was, the previous city administrator that that position could be absorbed into the street department, because that's really where it should go. They can work as a team, and I've seen them work as a team cleaning up at the entrance there, um, in front of the used to be Safeway, where it had a shelf on Pearl Street, where four oh one and Pearl Streets comes together, there's those islands, and some bushes and things. Um, as a team, those guys can go out there and knock it out in an hour, maybe two to three. It would take from one person half a day to a whole day to do that one area, so it's certainly much more efficient in those standards.
So, when we were talking about budgets, um, I remember according to the, that department said they were short-staffed now, so if your understanding is that they're not short-staffed, they can incorporate that into the person to do that.
I can't even hear you say that. You say that so easily, what did you just say?
Alex, would you help us with this?
My question was that during the budget sessions, we talked about Alex's group being short-staffed, so, or reference to that, I just want to make sure that Alex is in short-staffed, and he can accommodate that need to, uh, help them, that's all I'm asking.
I can answer that question. Alex can. Alex can.
Like I said before, I don't have the manpower. We are short-staffed, and we don't mind doing it, but we're gonna have to have another person. I mean, if she wants to give us that person that she had, I'd be more than happy to hire somebody, but right now, I don't have manpower to be able to take over those flower beds and stuff, the entrances, we don't have manpower to do it.
May, may I, um, answering your question, Ms. Stone? Um, so, this year, to, in preparation for the race, I don't know if you noticed, at the entrances there, they, they did a fabulous job, um, Oaks Landscaping came in and tidied them up before the race. Beautification Board is paying for that, and some hospitality money is going towards that, and that is what was decided to be done in the short-term last minute.
And Alex, please.
So, please, I, I didn't hear, who did do that? Uh, you say this, the Beautification Board did approve it?
Oaks Landscaping. They approved a portion of the money.
Say it again.
They approved a portion of the money.
To, I mean, the, the group, they, the who?
The Beautification Board approved a portion.
No, no, I, I, I just want to know, who did you approve, in the name of the company?
Oaks, Oaks Landscaping.
Okay.
I called several different companies, some of them didn't call me back, um, I called about five or six of them, some of them didn't call me back, and one of them said, I simply don't have the people, I've got people out on COVID, to do it in the timeframe that we have, of the middle of August to getting done for the race.
So, let me make sure I'm, I'm clear, I did think this was correct. The Beautification Board, uh, that person that we were funding for that was not?
Is no longer in the budget.
It's, it's, but it is being, I thought it was being moved to the street sanitation.
That's my understanding.
That it is there, so that, but so Alex is now letting us know that it's not, so it's lingering somewhere out there. So, that person that we could pay for him to do that, we need to clear that up, guys, if that's, if that's what's holding us up, because he doesn't have it, he's, he's saying he does not have that in his budget.
In our discussion at the budget work session, it was decided that you, that council wanted a grant rider, and if, if the street department was gonna pick up that, the entrances, that we would fill that space in the planning department with a grant rider, that was all discussed in the budget work sessions.
Grant riders, yeah.
We got that, I just, I just.
Right. Yes, and we are, um, not paying the grant rider price.
So, what's gonna happen now, will we, we would, the beautification, since we don't have a Beautification Board person to do maintenance of our entrances?
A city worker directed by the Beautification Board.
Okay, so that means the entrances is gonna go like it until the next event or something? So, now, in two weeks, all the entrances is gonna go raggedy again, because we don't have any event coming up, or two months, or?
That will be up to the street department.
I don't even know how it got to the street department.
Um, maybe not.
I don't remember.
But he, he doesn't have it, so.
I remember we discussed a grant rider, I remember that was discussed, but I don't even remember us having a conversation of, of, of eliminating the person to do beautification in the entrances, I don't remember that conversation.
I remember this conversation, I remember Alex coming up and asking for raises for his employees in need for help, because he needs, how about people cutting? I remember a conversation of saying that we've got a disability board walking through town, cutting our grass, I can remember me personally going out constantly paying my, my employees, I need cutting entrance ways in front of, uh, the Safeway, uh, I paid to keep Wells Park cut, I paid to keep the entrance way of the, of, turning into mayo that I live in there, I paid for that for you to keep all that, but, so, uh, as we all want it, we need to set out and make sure that we got, that, and it should be, in his department, she should be handling the grass cut, he should be handling the grass cut, but he needs the money to put the grass cover out there, so that if you tell the people to cut the grass and make our city go the way it's gonna look, that's what I've been asking for, for a long time, so, that's.
I think that was part of the Beautification Board, to beautify the city, that was the board was for. The board is gonna be the Beautification Board.
But we gotta have the people to do that.
So, our move now is, is that an issue that we need to address right now, get it straight?
I think it'd be more along the lines of a future agenda, item reader work session, be a little more appropriate, so everybody can.
We don't need to address for a second, but it does need to be addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. All right, um, ready to go into chamber conference?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ms. Sylvester had a class tonight, so I'm standing for what she sent me, her notes. We would like to congratulate our Chamber Member, Governor and Cotton, for being named at finalist in the Emerging Business Award by the United States Chamber of Commerce. This is one of the awards that will be given at the Victory Rewards that will be held Thursday, October twenty-first, at five P M. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce is interested in holding a restaurant crawl that will be starting up in October. This event will benefit local restaurants who choose to participate. If you own a restaurant, be on the lookout for a visit from one of our board members. If you would like more information, please call Ms. Sylvester at the Chamber. This event will be promoting all of the restaurants that participate, and the people who visit most restaurants will win cash prizes in it. The Grand Ole Post Office will host the first annual Small Business Expo on Saturday, September eighteenth, from nine to two P M. Retailers craft samples, raffle prizes, food trucks, and more. They are still looking for indoor and outdoor vendors, and please contact them at nine four four eight zero one five seven. The Food Network will be in our area coming this fall with their hit show, Restaurant Impossible. They are casting right now to find a restaurant with ten thousand dollars and two days. Chef Irvine revamped your restaurant. If you are interested in this program, please call Royal David Chamber, she has the information and the application process. Heroes for Health, the Free Medical Clinic in Darlington County, will be hosting a third annual Heroes for Health Classic Golf Tournament. They will be located at the Darlington Country Club on September twenty-third, is a hundred dollars a player and four hundred dollars a team. All proceeds will be used to help provide medical care for the uninsured population in the city. They are accepting, they also are accepting sponsorship. We would like to thank Sheila with codes of enforcement for her continued support as we try to get our building issues fixed at the Chamber. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, um, we'll listen for public comments, we'll provide you this five-minute, um, time limit, if you will, and, um, I'm gonna stay, Brenton Dana.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I wanted to come here tonight and, uh, express, uh, expressed a concern, and as to, I'm sure everyone here, and as evident as the, uh, people joining us for the meeting tonight, we all love Darlington, and as we all know, Darlington is steep in great history, and we want to, we want to keep that history, and, uh, my concern with, with moving or rezoning, you know, the area there on Orange Street to a general commercial zone, could have potential adverse effects, and there, uh, on the property there, two fourteen and two twelve Orange Street, and, which is directly, uh, behind, and, uh, is in the vicinity of this area, we were speaking about rezoning, and I just wanted to address council tonight, to please consider, uh, let's, let's, you know, we have the historical district intact for, for, for a reason, and, um, I would request that council consider, um, leaving the historical district, um, intact in the way it is, and zoned the way it is as well, and, um, with that, uh, Mr. Mayor and council, I yield the balance of my time, appreciate y'all having me tonight.
Who are you?
I apologize, I am Brenton Dana, I am, um, the son of the late James Dwight Dana, and son of, uh, Paula Fleming Dana, and, again, I own the property there on two fourteen and, uh, two twelve Orange Street, and, uh, born and raised in Darlington, and, uh, active in its historical preservation, and, uh, especially there in the historical district of, of Darlington, and, uh, I just believe it is in Darlington's best interest to keep it zoned, uh, the way it is, and not, uh, moved to a, uh, general, uh, commercial, excuse me, general commercial, uh, zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is Joyce Toms.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and of course, council members. First, I would like to say, the event Saturday night was great, uh, we needed to do more of that type of activity, but it was great, it was well-attended, and it was made Darlington on the map. Uh, I have four items that I would like to address to you, and of course, this is, it would be, it's not a strange thing, because we talked about this for years, maybe four or fifty years, probably before I was born. The first item that I would like to call your attention to is the flooding, systematic poor drainage, that's number one. Second is the street. I don't understand how you all have more orange cones around, because they're all in the streets, especially in South Darlington. Uh, I think we need to look at that, I only have five minutes, so I'm not gonna go into detail about that, we've been working as a team on that. Not only that, lighting, down South Main Street, you can't see anything after a certain time. I think we need to, of course, I don't know if you have devised your comprehensive plan yet, but we need to kind of include lighting in the infrastructure, you had some accidents, and I mean, maybe one or two persons was killed, I'm not really sure about that, and, okay, and of course, we talked about the foot and the drainage. Okay, and the last thing that I would like to know is, how are the citizens are going to respond to complaints that they have? I know, and this is like.
The street department was gonna pick up that, the entrances that we would fill that space in the planning department with a grant rider. That was all discussed in the budget work sessions.
Grant riders.
We got that.
Right, yes, and we are not paying the grant rider price.
So, what's gonna happen now will be, we would, the beauti- since we don't have a beautification board person to do maintenance of our entrances.
A city worker directed by the beautification board.
Okay, so that means the entrances is gonna go like it until the next event or something? So now, in two weeks, all the entrances is gonna go raggedy again because we don't have any vent coming up or two months or...
That would be up to the street department.
I don't even know how it got to the street department.
Um, maybe not have it.
I don't remember.
But he maybe doesn't have it, so.
I remember we discussed a grant rider, I remember that was discussed. But I don't remember us having a conversation of, 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 of eliminating the person to do beautification in the entrances. I don't remember that conversation.
I remember this conversation. I remember Alex coming up and asking for raises for his employees and need more help because he needs, how about people cutting? I remember a conversation of saying that we've got a disability board walking through town, cutting our grass. I can remember me personally going out constantly paying my employees and need cutting entrance ways in front of the same way. Uh, hey, I paid Keith Wells Park to, I paid Keith the entrance way of the, of turning into Mayo that I live in there. I paid for that for either to keep all that but, so, uh, as we all want it, we need to set out and make sure that we got it. And it should be, it is, she should be handling grass cut, he should be handling grass cut, but he needs the money to put the grass cut around there so that if some of the people cut the grass and make our city look the way it's looking, that's what I've been asking for, for a long time. So, that's what we're doing.
I think that was part of the beautification board, to beautify the city, that was the board was for. The board is gonna be the beautification board.
But we gotta have the people to do that.
So our move now is, is that an issue that we need to address right now, get it straight?
I think it'd be more along the lines of a future agenda item reader work session, be a little more appropriate so everybody can...
We don't need to address for a second, but it does need to be addressed.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, please, thank you, please. All right, um, ready to go into chamber of commerce?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ms. Sylvester had a class tonight, so I'm standing for what she sent me her notes. We would like to congratulate our Chamber member, Governing Cotton, for being named and finalists in the Emerging Business Award by the United States Chamber of Commerce. This is one of the awards that we win at the Dayton Awards that will be held Thursday, October 21st at 5:00 P.M. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce is interested in holding a restaurant crawl that will be starting up in October. This event will benefit local restaurants who choose to participate. If you own a restaurant, then look out for a visit from one of our board members. If you would like more information, please call Ms. Sylvester at the Chamber. This event will be promoting all of the restaurants that participate and the people who visit most restaurants will win cash prizes in it. The Grand Ole Post Office will host the first annual Small Business Expo on Saturday, September 18th from 9:00 to 2:00 P.M. Retailers craft samples, raffle prizes, food trucks and more. They are still looking for indoor and outdoor vendors and please contact them at 944-0157. The Food Network will be in our area coming this fall with their hit show, Restaurant Impossible. They are casting right now to find a restaurant with $10,000 and two days. Chef Irvine revamped your restaurant. If you are interested in this program, please call Royal David Chamber, she has the information and the application process. Heroes for Health, the Free Medical Clinic in Darlington County will be hosting a third annual Heroes for Health Classic Golf Tournament. They will be located at the Darlington Country Club on September 23rd, is a hundred dollars a player and four hundred dollars a team. All proceeds will be used to help provide medical care for the uninsured population in the city. They are accept, they also are accepting sponsorship. We would like to thank Sheila with codes of enforcement for her continued support as we try to get our building issues fixed at the Chamber. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, um, we'll take some for public comments, we'll provide you this five-minute, um, time limit if you will, and, um, let's see, Brent and Dana?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I wanted to come here tonight and, uh, express, uh, expressed a concern and as to, I'm sure everyone here and as evident as the, uh, people joining us for the meeting tonight, we all love Darlington and as we all know, Darlington is steep in great history. And we wanna, we wanna keep that history. And, uh, my concern with, with moving or rezoning another area there on Orange Street to a general commercial zone could have potential adverse effects and there, uh, on the property there, 214 and 212 Orange Street and, uh, which is directly, uh, behind and, uh, is in the vicinity of this area we were speaking about rezoning. And I just wanted to address council tonight to please consider, uh, let's, let's, you know, we have the historical district intact for, for, for a reason and, um, uh, I would request that council consider, um, leaving the historical district, um, intact in the way it is and zoned the way it is as well. And, um, with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, council, I yield the balance of my time and appreciate y'all having me tonight.
Who are you?
I apologize, I am Brent and Dana. I am, um, the son of the late James Dwight Dana and son of, uh, Paula Fleming Dana. And, again, I own the property there on 214 and, uh, 212 Orange Street. And, uh, born and raised in Darlington and, uh, active in its historical preservation and, uh, especially there in the historical district of, of Darlington. And, uh, I just believe it is in Darlington's best interest to keep it zoned, uh, the way it is and not, uh, moved to a, uh, general commercial, excuse me, general commercial, uh, zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is Joyce Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and of course council members. First, I would like to say, the event Saturday night was great. Uh, we needed to do more of that type of activity, but it was great, it was well attended and it was made Darlington on the map. Uh, I have four items that I would like to address to you. And of course, this is, it would be, it's not a strange thing because we talked about this for years, maybe four or 50 years, probably before I was born. The first item that I would like to call your attention to is the flooding. Systematic poor drainage, that's number one. Second is the street. I don't understand how you all have more orange cones around because they're all in the streets, especially in South Darlington. Uh, I think we need to look at that, I only have five minutes, so I'm not gonna go into detail about that, we've been working as a team on that. Not only that, lighting. Down South Main Street, you can't see anything after a certain time. I think we need to, of course, I don't know if you have devised your comprehensive plan yet, but we need to kind of include lighting in the infrastructure. You had some accidents and I mean, maybe one or two persons was killed, I'm not really sure about that. And, okay, and of course, we talked about the foot and the drainage. Okay, and the last thing that I would like to know is, how are the citizens are going to respond to complaints that they have? I know, and this is like, this is like a thought question, but how do you, and especially with the seniors, devise a way without the computers and the iPhones? Seniors need to know how to get in touch with the, um, city officials. And I know lately you all have had a, a change of staff and I don't know if it came out in the news and press or public, or I was out of town for a month. But people do read the news and press, they read the papers, especially at our seniors, I'm a real focus for seniors. Now, I'm in that group and if anybody didn't live long enough, hopefully they'll be in there too. But let's, um, I think again, just trying to think about seniors when we're making these changes and policies and so forth. And I'm sorry I didn't say who I was, I'm Joyce Thomas, first as a private citizen. Uh, I represent Darlington County Council, not only that, but the portion that, uh, represents the city also. Uh, and I think I'm kind of through everything now, I did talk about the potholes, but I'm gonna talk about potholes, we know what's going on. But I appreciate the, uh, job that you all are doing, so please, let's try to work together as a team and get things done. With Darlington, we got some good business.
This is Thomas, we're, uh, we are addressing the issue, uh, hopefully this grant company will come in for drainage.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the city back there has, uh, the city sewer that had done a work job of getting the drains sucked out and cleaned, but again, if you, uh, when it does flood and it's that deep and the cars ride through it, you have to look at it, walking through it, you can see it's circulating, it's going down, and so it's, it's flowing good, but it's only that big. So, uh, we are, we are, we do have that in the port to stick, we can get something out there. And, uh, the streets, we've got Pearl Street and Main Street in front of the bay, 525, that's gonna be paved.
Yes, sir.
Um, and the guys have been out with the potholes and we can't seem to quite catch up enough computer like we can get more help out there with that too.
Yes, sir, we really do.
We're, we're on it, we're, we're trying to get more help and more assistance to get all that done and, uh, the lighting has, I'm thinking, we've got all the lighting changed, we didn't get approved that all the lighting, you can look up and see the little LED lights, they're working on getting, we've got that approved to have all the lights and, and have changed for that. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that we, we probably use more polishes, blah, and design, but we're right to.
And the individual streets too, you know, um, you, um, we live together in the same, yes, sir, thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. All right, uh, David, uh, Long?
Longacre.
Longacre, yeah, that was last one. Okay, David?
And can I invite it with Angela Johnson because we are on the same group?
Yeah, yeah, David and Angela's.
We represent the, the CRC and we're here to discuss and, and get this finalized for the zoning, for the, the parcel that's on Orange Street. It, it's all one big property that was actually deeded on Pearl Street. When the zoning was originally set up, it was set up somehow that that got chopped into a residential section, but the rest of the hospital buildings were general commercial. Doesn't make sense, it's all one property, it needs to just be corrected as one property under the general commercial.
So the hospital is already zoned as general commercial?
That was our understanding, yes. So we're not trying to change the system or, or what's there.
There's two lots, there's two lots, they're trying to get the back lot.
It's, yeah, it should be all one, one general commercial property.
And, um, well, first off, I do resent, I'm Angela D. Johnson, D. Danford gets a little off topic and I'll just be brief. Um, I'm a little taken off guard when I heard Brent and Dana come up here because, um, I remember the triplets' birth, I was a cashier at Pigly Wiggly and to hear him come up here as full grown adult, it's been years since I've heard anything about the, the Dana triplets. But, um, wish I'd met you, so wonderful. But I remember that day like it was yesterday, everybody coming in to Pigly Wiggly talking about, yeah, the Dana triplets, so, yeah, that's, so, it's cool seeing you again. But to piggyback on what Longacre just said, Mr. Longacre just said, that, um, from a historical perspective, CRC has been in the community for decades. And we have been at that location for decades. And we felt strongly that we've been a strong contributor to the city of Darlington. Nothing we have ever sponsored, partnership with others to sponsor, has come close to compromising the culture of any area in the city, namely Orange Street. We've always been a strong supporter of the city of Darlington, nothing's gonna change that. What we're doing as a state in the last meeting is essentially to ensure that we're in compliance with what the city of Darlington requires. We want to be in compliance with the city ordinances and that's really the only thing that we have right here. Nothing that we're doing is to take away from the...
Is the lot already split, two, two, two lots? Is it, is it two lots on, on the back?
It's showing D. that, it was originally D. that had just one big lot.
The lot is zoned as, is already zoned as general commercial, back is zoned as residential.
Yes.
Is there a reason why you want to rezon the back?
To have the one property as the, the general commercial. That building that is on the section that's listed as residential, it was a maintenance building originally for the hospital, which also doesn't make any sense if it was part of the hospital and has a maintenance building, why was it never set as one big general commercial property? But when the zoning originally came through...
If you're not looking at the building, anything on the back and...
It, the building's there, I mean, it's, it's not changed.
I'm saying you're not looking at the building, anything on the back.
Right.
So what's the advantage to having it? So if you're not looking at the building, you think or change anything, what's...
There, over time, there, there was activities and things in that building through the, the CRC. Uh, the, the last was a, a little thrift shop, consignment store, which under ordinances and codes would not be consistent to have that part of the CRC in that building.
And your thought process is to do, what would that building change and bring back up to the...
As I stated in the previous meeting, the board has just been reassembled and what we are doing is working to reestablish CRC as a critical part of Darlington's culture and, and environment. So we are still making decisions as a board as to how we're going to proceed. So we haven't made any specific change plans, any specific plans for how we're going to proceed with two or three Orange Streets.
But you have, about what could take place either. So you're saying, you're saying you don't have plans, but that doesn't mean that you could not develop plans in the future to do something more drastic, is that right?
Mr. Nettles, we have one plan right now and that is to ensure that we are in compliance with what the ordinances are as they are today.
I'm sure.
Okay? And to ensure that we are following suit with what past precedents in Darlington have dictated. So we, I've asked for the city council to provide me a precedent and in going through your minutes for the past two, three years, I've only been able to identify one that I think specifically is in line with what we're experiencing with the CRC requesting to be zoned as general commercial. And that is the one for Avenue D and Main Street. So as I, as I understood in the minutes from May of 2019 and June of 2019, this is a situation very similar to what we have here. We have a community who has property that they were attempting to have operate as commercial as opposed to residence. And so as my understanding based on the senior minutes, there were almost 300 petitioners in that neighborhood that did not want to pursue that area becoming used as commercial. But it was still able to because apparently that was the right thing to do, but some city council was understanding. And so we are just attempting to do the same thing, we're trying to do what's right in our CRC, inhibit and fight and get it current.
But I still haven't answered my question. So you talked about what your short-term plans are, but I'm just trying to make sure a lot of understanding, but you're not saying that you don't have potentially long-term plans that are gonna be more impacted to the historical district, so that's just what I'm trying to find out.
I answered your question with my very first statement, and I explained, Mr. Nettles, that we have been here for decades and have done nothing to impact the culture of the historic district and we will continue to govern ourselves in a manner that's consistent with protecting the culture of Darlington.
So, let's just be clear. In your, uh, reorganizing the, at the CRC center of the board, you wanted to be in compliance with Darlington's policies, rules and codes. The codes said that you needed to be general commercial, a commercial. You were told that based on, because it was, uh, that, that's how the front part of the partner's been operating all this time. And all you wanted to do is to make sure that all of the property, which is one piece, has the same code. We don't know, from what I'm understanding, you say, you are not aware when it was separated, I've got a different coating on the back, uh, from the front and all that. You just wanna be in compliance with Darlington and that our board, our code has said, this is what you need to do. You're not trying to do anything else.
We didn't get to, exactly.
Okay.
We didn't get to see the minutes, but what was dated in the last meeting, I think Lisa may have stated it, that, that as far as this zone categorization that we have, that's something that we didn't start until the seventh. So, I'm...
It, it's fine, I, I'm understanding now and because there was this understanding that there were two codes, one for the back of the building and one for the front, all you were trying to do. Now, it is, I think this is an issue with the codes. Not we can't seemingly, we gotta let them do...
No, it's more my understanding that the zoning, I don't wanna get the, the organizations mixed up. Lisa, is zoning or planning has already, yeah, would you...
Uh, the planning is the one who approves, or they don't approve, they recommend the council on it, thank you for that.
Are we gonna discuss this project now or are we gonna wait till us...
Let's, uh, let's just cut it here, we'll finish discussing it.
Sounds good.
Do we stand, do we stand before...
Do we stand? May I ask members, may I, do we stand, do we start to stand? Um, I am presently owner of the Lindbergh's Barbecue. My brother who's been in service for over 35 years here in the...
Yes.
City of Darlington, all right. So I'm in the process of getting this business back up and going, okay? Now, uh, I've had the fire department out on the inspection and everything and, um, still got some flaws there that I gotta correct. My thing is right now is, I'm looking out to you guys to help me get, make this plan come true. My brother, uh, was real faithful to the dogs and, you know, all the businesses that he had. And I really, I'm proud of him. He passed in last year, June 6th. And I'm the baby sister, we've been like a father to him. But I'm trying to step into his footprints to carry on what he wanted, okay? But in order to be able to do that, you know, I need to know all about what's going on in Darlington. And I'm, 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 I'm past law enforcement, I work in courts. Uh, 22 years in law enforcement as an officer. Uh, and I worked with the South Darlington Department of District, District Sevi's, or a lot of part of my law enforcement years. And I'm, I'm very pleased with what I've heard here tonight, the understanding, the conversation and all that. I'm real pleased with that, with me coming in as a new kid on the block. But I'm still looking at some things that I, I need to get done. Now, I've, I've been waiting for a, a city inspector report, but I have not gotten it. I've called several times, but I haven't gotten, I don't know whether you all have anything to do with that or not, but I have not received that report, but, uh, I would continue to try. I'm not sure if anybody can, can get rid of that or not, but you got your, I'm here. Um, but, um, I, I just want you all to know my plans and, and I'm seeking your support in helping me to make this thing true. Uh, I'm quite sure all of you, for me, even the restaurant there, 1250 Main Street, uh, you know, they were good food and I plan to continue that. I got their recipe for barbecue and I tell you, you'll have that. So I, 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 I stand before you tonight to say that I am pleading on the case of my brother who's passed, who goal was to continue to be a part of Darlington and make this restaurant a success. And I'm looking for you guys to piggyback on with me to help me be able to do that.
Well, thank you, Denise, I just wanna make clear that what you're in need of is the inspector, is the, the inspection report.
The inspector already came out, yeah.
But you don't have the report.
Yes, ma'am, that's been mailed, but if I can get your email address, I'll make sure you have it, it'll be in your inbox in the morning.
Just to, Sheila, in case you didn't hear that.
Right, yeah, I met Sheila when she came out.
Yes, ma'am.
She told me she could go mail the lunches out and cut it.
Yes, ma'am.
We sit in the post office.
Pardon?
I'm just still sitting in the post office.
Well, I, I, you know, I really get anxious about getting the business over and, uh, everything that I can get done, I want to take, provide as soon as possible.
You can have it right there, she'll be right on, just tell her, go ahead.
Okay.
You need to listen.
Good luck.
We're excited, glad you're up.
So I'm looking for you guys to help me out with that. You have my back.
We got your back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you for revitalizing it.
Say, Mayor, Council, my name is William Jackson and I'm here, uh, to talk about the property on Orange Street. And, kind of, history goes back to, we bought house on St. John Street in, uh, late 90s. They've been there ever since, wanted to get involved with the city, so I've been on the Historical Landmarks Commission for, probably there for four or five terms, basically probably helping with those numbers. Um, you guys, the city has paid for, um, training for the Historical Landmarks Commission, they've got what, offices in historic districts and stuff like that. And changing, really, if you look back at what goes on in historic districts, when people come into town to invest money, recently somebody on the other corner, you know, saw the house, saw the potential in the house, um, knew it was a historic district because of the markings and de, uh, demarcations along the street. So he spent 40 years and who knows how much money, uh, turning an older house that was not bad, but turned into a, a part of the great, greater houses in the neighborhood. Um, it's been proven that historical, uh, historic districts preserve the old houses, which a lot of people are looking for. Um, so I'm just, I'm here to say, you know, let's try to figure out some kind of way that we can keep it back after that property or back two-thirds of that property. The back portion of that property, uh, is under R10, um, at desk, just because anything other than single family dwellings back there really would, if you drive down Orange Street and you get down San Don, it's hard, Sanders Street, that's probably the most intact historic district of Darlington House. Most of those houses, um, have not, they're pretty much unaltered houses, they, they wouldn't ever cut up into apartments, they wouldn't ever change them to something else. Uh, even Edward Jo, Edward Jones there, right behind the bank, you know, they kept the exterior side, and I'm pretty sure it's the size of rooms, that they've kept that house, um, to its original intent. So if Edward Jones ever moved out, somebody could move right back in there and turn it back into a house easily. Um, so I would really like to see commodity shaming that a whole strip down Pearl Street, which should be gen, uh, general commercial. That whole strip down there was zoned R10. And the city realized it was, some business that was going on there, the city realized that it was zoned, there's potential when it should have been zoned commercial. Don't think that they thought about that whole property, they went from Pearl Street all the way back to Orange Street and that was one continuous piece of property. So they just went through and said, hey, this all used to be zoned general commercial, so this is zoned on the, the car lot, the dentist's office. So this is on the car lot, the dentist's office, what was the old tourist building, the original Legion, the CRC building, the old hospital, dairy bar, all that stuff. It was just, well, zone, so they went so many feet back and said, okay, this is all going to be general commercial. At least if I'm wrong with any of this, or Sheila, if I'm wrong, please correct me. But they cut that, they cut the hospital building, they drew line through that building, which was actually a problem, and I get that. But I'd love to burn it, all of us to figure out a way to keep the Orange Street side of it as a residential section, and definitely pass out stupid complaints.
Oh, I did, okay. The historical district, it doesn't, where it stops at Wells? Where is, I mean, or it starts, it stops, I think.
Somewhere.
You know, because I'm thinking about the plaza right here. You know, that's, yeah, that's on Orange. I don't know whether, and then at one side is, is residential and, but this side, all the way to the Orange Street, is still a general commercial. Just want to see where this, where it is, to see if there is some kind of compromise. You gotta see where some of these lines are.
Well, there's no plans for it right now, I think, in the neighborhood. One thing I forgot to say is, you know, I've been in sales for thirty years, we still are, we need to get a sticky plan. I get more and more stuff, and trust me, we've talked to everybody in the neighborhood, and everybody is really upset by it. But there's only a few people who really, you know, that do this, because they just got fear of getting a little bit more. So, everybody in the whole neighborhood is really, really concerned that it can be general commercial. And they, I'm sure they've had great intentions not to do anything, but it's a dogfight, I think, with the boys. And she doesn't want to see anything happen. You know, the property changes hands, and they want to put up all this zone there. It's them general commercial, there's nothing that people, and then we've got neon lights and who knows what. It's a variety in the middle of Orange Street. And that's just, it's scary for us, because now the stagnated investment housing. It's like, well, I'm not gonna spend a hundred grand on my house that's built in nineteen thirty, and there's some neon sign place right there. So it just, I mean, zone general commercial is, is just really scary. So it's, it's almost like, you know, whoever the intention or plan for somebody to buy that property and to do something, something that would affect the Orange Street side of it, let's deal with it. Let's just, you know, leave it the way it is for now.
Chip?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I think you all recognize each other in the August meeting. I was the first one that had a, got the letter and started screaming about this. What I have here is a couple of handouts for each one of you. Pass those back if you're hungry for sure. The first one that you're gonna see on the top of this is a copy of Sandborne Fire Map from nineteen thirteen. Now, these maps are available at the Library of Commerce. They're also available on website from the University of South Carolina. You'll notice the highlighted area that's on that map. That's the corner that we have in question tonight. There was a house on that property from somewhere in late eighteen hundreds up until the late nineteen sixties. That was the McKeithen household. McKeithen's very influential in the neighborhood and the city of Darlington. He was the president of one of the local banks. He also founded the town, saw middle town of Lumber. Very important people. It was clearly residential area. If you also notice, the back lot was separate. The piece that was the American Legion Building on Pearl Street at that time was separate. I believe that when someone came through and they established these historical districts, they recognized the fact that that wasn't one time a historical site. Now, if you go through the city's own website and you identify what the historic district is, you will find that the St. John's Historic District is on the National Historic Register. Along with the photographs that document the sites that are on the National Historic Register is the lot in question and the building in question that are on Orange Street. These are all placed on the National Historic Register by photo documentation on the city's own website. So clearly, I believe the evidence shows that this has not always been commercial. This has always been a historical site. Now, according to our own city code ordinances, chapter number fifty dash seven point two, clearly states revisions to inventory map, you'll find this on page two highlighted. It clearly says at the bottom of that paragraph, the changes within the historic district shall not be made without due consideration by the commission. Now, I don't know if Mrs. Pruitt is here tonight, is Mrs. Pruitt here tonight? She's back there, I made a phone call after the August meeting, met Mrs. Pruitt by phone, and she informed me that as the Chair of the Historic Landmark Commission, she was not even aware that this was even coming up before the city council.
No, no, I think you might be confusing me with Miss Pearson.
Miss, okay, Miss Pearson, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I stand corrected on that, thank you. And anyway, I spoke to her, she informed me that she was not even informed that there was going to be a potential change in zoning to a property that's in this, in the historic district. So that's just not cohesive with our own city ordinances. If we continue on and we look at the third page, you'll find Darlington City Code, section fifty dash thirteen B one, where it's highlighted, every reasonable effort shall be made to provide a compatible use for a property that requires minimal alteration of the building's structure or site and its environment, or to use the property for its originally intended purpose. Someone with some great wisdom, took a lot of time, spent a lot of money to develop our historic districts, to protect the historic districts in our city. As a personal investor in history and a renovator of a home, I can understand why they did that. Because I don't want that neon sign across the street from my house. The residents that surround that area do not want something else across the street from their house. It doesn't, it's not a fight with CRC. We don't have a problem with CRC whatsoever, we appreciate what you're doing for the community. All we're trying to do is protect our investment in our community and the livelihood of our historic district. Right now, Mr. Jackson and I sat on my front porch this evening before the meeting. We sat on a quiet street, enjoying a conversation. They sell that piece of property, a storefront goes up front, those could become tractor-trailer docks if we make that general commercial. There's been, I mean, no restriction for that. So I'm asking the city council to recognize the money, the investment, the time, and the residents of this community by voting against this and keeping this zone R-10. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to come up. I am a resident of one oh six North Sycamore, my name is Jackie Minjarlethen. And as a homeowner, I am concerned because it does affect the value of the home when something else becomes commercial. And I know that because I've been studying real estate, but you get real estate license. So as a homeowner too, as a grandmother, I have grandchildren, and I like it to stay a neighborhood. Because we walk across the street, my mom and dad live on Orange, I live on Sycamore, and me and my grandchildren walk down the street and go to my mom and dad's. If something, some kind of commercial business comes up there, I'm not, you know, it's not gonna be as safe with, with the play and run around in the door and everything. We've already got a schoolhouse down the street. That brings in a lot of traffic to our neighborhood. We've got the firehouse, the police station, and as you said, that more complex down there. So I would like to keep it as a neighborhood, not only because I have grandchildren, but because of my personal investment in my home. I want it to stay where it has value, and it will affect the value if you guys change one. And my parents have been there, and their house, it's nineteen seventy-four. And those homes are beautiful. All in that area, if you ride around, there are a lot of beautiful homes. So not just for the aesthetics, but also because we have, I'm willing to say, I understand they've got money invested, but like Chip said earlier, you guys, I encourage you to go look at his house, because he has, I've watched him work and heard him work. And it is quiet now that his work is here. But it's beautiful, you guys need to go look at it, it's gorgeous. And I try to take very good care of my house and keep curb appeal at my house. And I would like to keep my investment, so please, please consider not changing that zone commercial. And thank you, Lisa, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck.
Hello.
Hi.
I am the founder, I am the pastor, I'm next board to the CRC. And so I rise to this evening, I've heard so much about everyone's concern about the CRC and the history of Darlington. So what I ask the question, whose history are we trying to preserve? Are we really trying to preserve the history of Darlington? Or are we really trying to just preserve a particular part of Darlington? And so I ask, and so with asking that question, the CRC is a part of that history. And so if we are going to make a wrong or right, we need to make a wrong or right. Now, if we are, we're being out of compliance, and if right is right, and right is right, wrong is wrong. Now, I, I do believe that if it was the other way around, if it was a wrong, there would be no problem to make this right. And so, and I also do believe that with the unknown, I've heard the question, so what are your plans for long term, what are your plans for the future? If we know the future, we will know the future. We could predict the future. And so I do believe that the unknown is always scary. But everybody who walked in here today, there was one unknown. But you didn't seem to be concerned about that unknown. And that unknown was whether this bitch or this chair is going to hold me. Nobody expected it. You just sat down and safe believing that the chair and the bench was gonna hold you. So I say all that to say is that the CRC is, it is commercial. And so it should be treated as that. And I mean, if it's residential, a residential lot and property should be private. I've witnessed with my own eyes, I've witnessed the back lot that's in question tonight. I've witnessed it being used by families for picnics. I've witnessed it being used for dog walking, dog fetching. If it's residential, why is it being used for that? That's what you do in a commercial lot. So the residents of Orange Street treat it as such, all right? So I petition this council, the city council, to make a wrong or right.
Just want to make this there, that's my pass, though.
That's my pass.
Thank you for your comments. All right, unfinished business, Public Area Order twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, going for two thousand two hundred three, Orange Street. Are you sure we have comments on this? Sheila, can you address this for us on this?
Yes, sir.
My question was, is it, how is it zoned right now?
Okay, so kind of...
Can you come over, I'd like to hear you.
So I've heard this all night, that, you know, it's general commercial, and it was, we've been trying to make a wrong or right, and what's residential, and so when our zoning maps were created in the seventies, nineteen seventy-three, that property, the one in the corner, the little, the little building, the general commercial, the front, that front half of the old clinic or hospital, whatever it was, was general commercial. The part that was residential and why this one property is now two different, one parcel with two different zoning districts is because that back lot was five different parcels in nineteen seventy-three. So at some point after nineteen seventy-three, after our zoning districts were made, it was combined. But when it was combined, it wasn't made into just general commercial. And so, so to say we're making a wrong or right, it's not necessarily making a wrong or right, because it was intentionally residential to begin with, it was five different properties. And when it was purchased, you know, the zoning never changed. So the back half...
The back half was five different properties?
So the, right, the back half was, was five different properties. So the current building that's on the one parcel end, the long stretch, is, that actual building is in a residential district.
Okay. This is the back half of part of the building that is in the residential, though.
But, so the original, so the original, and you can see it from here. So the original, right here, just this part was general commercial. The rest of it was all residential in the original zoning maps.
Here's what I'm, here's, is, is what I'm looking at, getting a wrong right. Because simply, whatever it was, it was just one piece that was broken up into these parts. If, if they were separate, were they separate?
Originally, they were separate, because all of our zoning maps have each individual parcel.
But there was no owners or something? Because how would they, when, when the CRC acquired it, they required all of that?
Right, so at some...
As one piece.
Right, so at some point after our zoning maps were made, and it was all, it had the five parcels of land that was residential and the front one that was general commercial. I'm not saying that it wasn't, when CRC acquired it, likely it was all one.
Yes.
However, what I'm saying is that in the spirit of our zoning district, of residential in that back half, it was, it was residential. So when it, when they combined the parcels, that it didn't change into general commercial, and the back half was left residential. I'm just saying that originally, when the front half, when the front was the clinic and the other side was whatever it was, everything that faced Pearl Street on the back lot, to what Mr. Jackson said, absolutely, on the other side where Park Street Floors and the other, the AT&T Building, that was residential for whatever reason, that has since been changed to general commercial, because that's a property zone, general commercial. On this one, we never changed it. It was general commercial in nineteen seventy-three, and the back half was residential in nineteen seventy-three. And it was five parcels of land in nineteen seventy-three. When it was combined, I have no idea. That it was, the deed was transferred to CRC as one parcel, that's fine too, but that's not necessarily making a wrong or right by changing the entire lot to general commercial.
Okay. I'm not sure what you mean by that, what we're saying, wrong to, to right. The fact that if they acquired it as one, you are going back prior to them saying it was in parts. So, and that's what you are dealing with now, is the fact that you have knowledge that it was in five areas and they are not. That is what, and so obviously, those, whenever it got to be split up or whatever it got to be won, there was something that's not correct along the line as far as coding or as far as how it is on your documentation.
Right.
It, it doesn't matter. Where, where we are now is because of that, because there is, I don't know where there's any other place where one piece has the two different codes. I'm not sure of that. And if that's the case, that's what we are trying to correct now. That is what appears to us is wrong, that you got one piece with two different coding. We want to get that straight. And I'm with, with that, get that straight. And according to what they have taken the steps to be in compliance with the city, which says, and according to what they got back, it should be zone general commercial. Now, if there's some other, and we want to move on, as you see, they're in the spirit of trying to get this corrected, this is what I'm saying now, if we are not the ones to make that, but in the past, because it has been cited, there has been the same, same group, same group of citizens who complained about the same thing off of Avenue D. We did not bear it. All, and so, you know, we can't, because the CRC has indicated that they don't want to do anything that would cause a problem, but they want to be correct.
Right. Well, and I get what they're saying.
So all of this other talking, that's, that's getting the wrong to right.
Right, and so, and but as a city, we do have another property, the Genesis property, that is zone two. Right, and so, and, but, a- as a city, we do have another property, the Genesis property, that is zoned to different. So the original property is zone, is zoned core commercial, and the rest of the property is zoned, um, office residential. And that hasn't been changed, um, they are still core commercial and off, and office residential. So, and, and I, and I do understand, um, the residents' concern, because general commercial does pretty much allow anything you wanna do there. Um, and so, you know, and I was looking at it, and it might be something that they could do office residential, so it does allow, um, you know, still residential, but it does, um, um, make the commercial uses more strict, so that you can't just do anything there. So, you know, there, there can be a compromise, if that's what council is so choosing to do, um, but, um, making all of it, um, general commercial, I'm not sure will be prudent for, for the citizens that are in, in that area, in that historic district.
So, let me ask you a question. Um, Edward Jones, where is Edward Jones located?
Is right next to the bank on Orange Street.
And what is it zoned?
I have to look, I don't know.
I think it's office residential.
I can look.
So, when, when was this, uh, zone changed to, uh, the front was changed to general commercial?
It was, in nineteen seventy-three, it was general commercial in the front, and it was office.
They changed, they changed the front part to general commercial?
In nineteen seventy-three, but when, when our maps were made, it was general commercial. What, um, Mr. Jackson was speaking of was, um, Park Street Floors, um, the AT&T Building, the one block up.
In nineteen seventy-three, we actually started a zone?
That's when our zoning maps were not, are.
And so they, at that point, they said, we're just gonna make the front half general commercial.
Right, and the back five parcels were residential.
But those five parcels,
Is there anything else on the back of Orange Street, up in that area, that is general commercial?
Um, only the AT&T building, none here, but, um, the next block up.
So, is that, is that part of the, of the star?
The church, the church beside that one, that was the, that's.
The church, the church on the front sides is, um, general commercial. I'll have to look and see if that, that might be, I mean, I, I didn't look at that part, but, I mean, I can look at it, I don't have a problem.
I mean, they got the light building on Orange Street, I mean, what is that?
AT&T, um, building being zoned general commercial. So at this point, they could come in at any time and put up a flashing sign.
At their place.
Right or wrong.
Um, they could, I, yes, they could.
So, the challenge of whether the CRC gonna put up a flashing sign has no merit, because AT&T could do the same thing?
But they sell it to someone.
I don't think CRC sold no flashing sign.
Oh, okay.
They have no desire for anything like that. So I don't understand.
To answer the questions, to answer some of the questions that were asked about what is the zoning district, um, Edward Jones is office and residential, and, uh, the AT&T is core commercial.
No, but that was changed, that was changed when Park Street Floors was changed.
This was turned to core commercial right here.
Still the city block over, it's also right off of our square.
But still, I mean, as, as what we asked.
After the AT&T building, it's all residential, um, until you get to the fire department. I don't, I don't see how we go, and in the middle, essentially in the middle of our historic district, we go into a general commercial. I understand the plight of the building, and how you have the back section of the building as a non-general commercial, and I'm interested in bringing the general commercial line back behind your building. It looks like you have some new property markers, to go about where that oak tree is. I'm comfortable, you know, moving that GC back to that line to encompass the whole building. But from my perspective, we need to maintain our historic, um, districts. They're there for a reason, it's what's, um, brings Darlington's character, is our beautiful homes. I'm also, um, a little taken aback, um, with the city code that he, of course, brought us, where it says, changes within the historic district shall not be made without due consideration by our historic commission. So, if we haven't brought it to the historic commission, then that's also an issue.
I don't see an issue making it general commercial, because they, they already stated they have no intention of doing anything, um, against Darlington's ordinance, or, or hinder or harm the city of Darlington, or the historic district. Um, the city had no problem, definitely this council had no problem. When it was on the corner of Avenue D and Main Street, the lone citizens didn't want a part of that park, and the basketball court, they had about two, or three hun- I was speaking. That park had about two or three hundred signatures who said they didn't want a basketball court. But this council had no problem ignoring those citizens and making that property general commercial. But I guess because of the sound of town it was on, and who brought it to council, which I feel like those citizens was ignored. And I'm not saying ignore anybody, that's not what I'm saying, that's not what I'm trying to say. All I'm saying is, that, um, CRC, clearly stated, they have no intentions of doing anything that's gonna harm the historic district.
The park you're mentioning is the Terrence Caraway Park, and we knew what their intention was. They said they would like to change it so that they could fulfill building a park for Terrence Caraway. And I don't think that is comfortable. Um, you're talking about changing it for a, for an unforeseeable future. If there's an interest that comes about, that they would like to change it to general commercial, and come up to us and ask us to change for a specific reason, then I'd be happy to hear it. But just a general commercial blanket, um, ordinance in the middle of a historic district, district just does not set a good precedent for preserving our homes. When we were on, excuse me, when we were on Everett, Everett Street, we had a house torn down, we had half the community blow up at us. Um, and that was just one hundred, I mean, imagine if we put a gas station in the middle of our community. So, I just don't see, without understanding, a clear understanding, what they wanna do with the land, that we should blanket all throughout, you know, general commercial, just does not seem, you know, smart for the future of the city, so, I'm sorry.
And the point of it was, those citizens didn't want a basketball court. But you had no problem wanting to put a basketball court in the middle of their, of their neighborhood.
Uh, from my understanding, and this is all a long time ago, we had, you know, different personality issues with the different groups that were trying to do that. It wasn't whole community, like you elaborate to.
It was about two hundred signatures that we had.
Well, I'll correct, I'll, my turn to talk now, I'll correct that issue on D Avenue. On D Avenue, it was before I was mayor, and, uh, it was a conflict, because I was mayor, but you only had one person to bring in, to bring in names, and nobody else showed up. So there was, there might have been two hundred, but I don't think there's two hundred people in that neighborhood, and nobody's, and there's not a basketball court going there, so we have a nice, um, almost a million dollar, um, park on there for four hundred officers that died in our state. And again, as Mr. Gardner said, um, when I miss, um, announced entirely myself, brought that to the city council, we had a plan. Uh, at this point, we don't have a plan, and that's where I have an issue with this, I don't have an issue with CRC either. I do have an issue with, there is a plan, it's been displayed for forty-eight years, um, it's not in compliance, uh, out of compliance with the city, because the city did that. You know, if, again, if you, at any point that you bring up a plan and say, this is what we wanna build here, uh, we wanna do something at this point, then, you know, we can address that. But at this point, this, again, she has her plans of doing anything, or any harm to the city, has done it harm to the city, but again, uh, she dies or lives on, or something that happens, then it's, it's already regulated at that point, and anybody else can come along and put whatever they care to put there in the building next to it.
Is the AT&T building, is that in the historic built, uh, district?
Starts right after that, it starts right after that, the Dick White House, we got church parking lot, the AT&T building, then that first nice old St. John Street.
So the Edward Jones house is not in it? What, what's that street, is that, is that, um?
It's all the street, here they made it.
Is that what street, in the dark?
This is the map, if you see the shaded area, the gray shaded area is the historic overlay. I'm gonna give you an idea.
So, it's on, so this side, I mean, it's just on one side, and then go down?
The AT&T building is in there.
That's what I'm saying, so.
But it was there.
From where?
Before.
In seventy-three?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
It's been there the whole time, so, and the historic district was not formed until eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
Okay, so, as well.
Before it was the Greenwich Room on the National Register.
So, it would be, it would be similar to, um, Bill Allen's law, it was, it was on OR, while he had his law office there, but just as soon as he shut down his law office, they converted that, as part of the law office, OR immediately went to R ten zoning, because it changed occupancy. He wouldn't go do anything, they revamped, they went outside, and so now it's R ten, so things could change even more.
It, it, it never actually changed zoning districts, it was a issue of non-conforming status, because it had been in a law office for so many years prior to, um, grandfathered in. Because the garden continuously operating.
All we're trying to get at, it seems like to me this is just a lot of stuff, we can work this out. If, if, I'm telling you, if, if it's all about putting a plan together for you to be, and pu- putting a plan, it is never gonna be that kind of, that kind of business. If that's what it takes for you to feel comfortable that it would never go into nothing, I'm not sure what, if this is what you, you're saying, your problem.
I'm just saying they have their plan of what they're gonna put there, so.
Yeah, but it's, but it is definitely not a plan to be where you would have.
Whatever there, and, 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 it's just general commercial, and it's, it's great, no coloration.
As the same thing, as what you're saying, because you say it's gonna be a part, they could say, also say, if part of the, part of the CRC is that, they would like to see that as a part, so it can, can be continued to be used by the family picnics that they had out there, walking the dogs and all of that. I mean, I would see, I mean, that's what's being done now, they can continue for it to be that way, if that seems to be the point. No, that's what I'm saying, they can continue to say that. That's the point.
They have, they have community, they have people, all of them.
Yeah, definitely, I know.
I haven't been on that property.
I know.
And Ms. Jones, please understand, that's a disappointment, because I've seen you outside your yard, and please know, it's a public, public facility. You're always, you're, you're all you want.
Like, I'd like to ask you questions about that, one, because in the past, the, the building that faces Orange, that's there, was used as a consignment shop or thrift store, so if it stays in the zoning that it currently is, does that mean the CRC can continue to operate the thrift store or consignment shop, as it has for the last thirty years? If it's still zoned as R ten?
As long as, as long as it hasn't been shut down for ninety days, so the, our conformity ordinance, as it reads, is, if it's in.
So it would be out of compliance.
So it would be out, if it hasn't been running for ninety days.
So, there, there's one of the, the crux of this thing. The other side is, because that property is split, who's to say, on the general commercial side, we wouldn't sell that property as a whole, and they tear down the buildings that are currently on Pearl Street, and because that's already zoned general commercial, they could put anything and everything, and you're still going to have the lights facing Orange Street. It would not change the fact.
That would be on the front half of the property, not the back half.
But you're gonna be safer, if you, if you got me on lights, you're gonna see it right on Orange Street.
The property is the whole county law.
If I, if I had to imagine, I would think that if submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they wouldn't operate a variety store at two oh three, just something like a, you know, trinket shop or a variety store or something, that wasn't a taxi cab stand or something with a ton of traffic to make sure they put a variety store. I would imagine that if that went in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, that that would pass.
Got any more discussion from council?
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I was handed this as part of the public hearing, and I'll hand it to you, so you have it for the minutes. Um, it's a posi- a petition of opposition to zoning, proposed zoning change, says the purpose of this petition is to voice our opposition to the proposed zoning change to two oh three Orange Street, from R ten, low density residential to general commercial, we all desire to see our city rebound and prosper, but we also desire to protect and preserve our historic districts and residential neighborhoods. We have more than enough vacant commercial buildings and properties within our city to develop, we do not need to remove portions of it to our historic district and intrude on our residential neighborhoods. We develop, citizens are asking you to oppose this sudden change, and there are several implications. And I'm gonna hand this to her, put it in your notes. One, kind of correction, Avenue D and Main Street, that park, that zoning has always been general commercial, it was not changed, and a park is always allowed in, is a permitted use in all zoning districts.
How many signatures, ma'am, and how many signatures do we need to add on the list?
Oh, yeah, 'cause the fish market is a bit of. Oh, okay.
Any further discussion from council?
Oh, okay. We got a hand over here. What were you asking?
Is there any further discussion from council?
Yeah, they had a hand there.
We just wanted to.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
It's public hearing.
End of conversation for, over here on that, we keep conversation.
But you got a public hearing, that's why, that's why y'all put it in the meeting, in meetings. It's a public hearing.
How many signatures, how many signatures are on the petition?
There's one.
Twelve?
There is.
Twelve is signature?
The local building would be included, the people that live on Sandy Street, Park Street, St. John Street, and Orange Street, so there's.
Yes, sir.
I would like to urge the council to be very cautious, how you proceed with this, there's been a lot of mention tonight about setting precedents, and about going back to past precedents. If I could purchase from Park Street all the way to my home on Orange Street, if you vote yes for this, that means that I could change that whole block to general commercial, because I combined it all. You're gonna set a precedent here, you're liable to open Pandora's box.
In response to that, a precedent has already been set. Precedent was already set with Avenue D and Main Street.
We can change it to zoned on Avenue D and Main Street.
But the use, but the use of the property.
The zone was a change.
Use of the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Split zoning does exist in, in a, a lot of municipal areas, and that seems to be the case with this situation, the, the rear part of the property being residential, when the properties were combined, I don't think that one zoning should take precedence over the other. So the back, the rear part of the property should stay residential, and the front part can stay commercial. It just means that there's a mixed use and a different kind of density requirement for building on the back of the property than there is for the front.
Sure.
Right.
I would like to motion that we close the public hearing.
One second. Ms. Banks.
You go. I'm thinking about it.
Just read it.
Yeah, I'm tired.
Uh, okay, thank you. Our motion's closed. Alright, second read, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen, green zoning two thou- two hundred and three, Orange Street from R ten to general commercial.
How many come over to that, we move, rezone ordinance twenty twenty-one thirteen, rezone to Old Beards Street from R ten to general commercial.
Second.
Who else? No, or you want to comment, or?
I mean, I mean, how long your fork is done, and, yeah, well, if that's it, so, ma'am.
Okay, so, none?
None.
None, right, none. None. Our motion's closed. Our motion's closed.
And, face your mayor, I remember last time I recusing myself because of the representation I've had with Ms. Johnson and her owners.
Sure, I have a paper for you to fill out when you come up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Please understand that my interest as a councilman, I don't need it for myself at this point. But if you would like to rezone, that part of your building is outside of the general commercial that y'all may have an issue with, I'll be happy to, um, support that. But the backside, I just want to feel comfortable, um, approaching the historic district.
And I have no problem with it either, if we have a plan of what's going to be put in there. Until we know what's going to be put there, I would prefer to wait. All right, thank you. All right, new business, uh, CDBG, resolution for downtown, streets-